Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting. The City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, February the 12th, Utah 2018. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, Executive Session, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Regarding the Appointments to the City's Boards and Commissions. Obviously, in Executive Session, we can discuss items with our applicants and with each other, but we cannot make a decision in Executive Session, and any decision must be brought back to Open Session for completion, and with that information in the record, we will recess into Executive Session at 5:31. The council has returned from Executive Session at 6:35. We will recess this Executive Session until after the regular council meeting is completed. And moving in our agenda, let me open a regular meeting of City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, February the 12th, year 2018. The police rise will have an invocation by Councilmember Reed and our Police Chief, Chris Pires, where is he? There he is, over there, he's in his reds and legions.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to see another day, Lord. Lord, please watch over the decisions that we make here tonight, Lord. Please watch over those that are here for this meeting. Watch over us as we leave this place, Lord. Please continue to bless our first responders and our many women in the military, and just please continue to bless the City of Pearland. These blessings we thank you for, and ask in your Son Jesus' name.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas flag.
Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank all of you for being here tonight. Eventually, winter will fade away, and summer will be here, and we're going to wish we had some misty weather. So, with that thought in mind, let's go down through our agenda. Item three on our agenda is the roll call. All of our council members are here tonight, bright and shiny faces. Item four, citizen comments. Have there been any citizen comments? We will harvest the results. And there are a few, yes. I'll ask Mayor Protem, Councilmember Reed, if he will have a list for us.
Okay, so, we have two speakers tonight. I'm going to just ask both speakers to, please try to limit your comments to three minutes, and introduce yourself, say your name and address when you come to the podium. The first speaker is Ms. Heather Zias. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Zias.
Thank you for having me. My name is Heather Zias. I'm a resident of Pearland. I'm also a director on Brazoria Fort Ben Mudd 1. I am residing at 2303 Harbor Chase Drive. So, thank you for having me this evening. I recently had the opportunity to attend the conversation with council members hosted by the Pearland Chamber of Commerce, and I had the fortune of speaking with Mr. Carbone and Mr. Perez that evening, and though it was late and my questions were the last chance asked, they took their time, and they were very thorough in their responses, as was Representative Ed Thompson, who was also in attendance. That evening and this evening, I was, intend to speak about the Blue Ridge landfill odor situation. I expressed my concern with regards to an appearance of lack of communication or a reduction in communication regarding the status, and within a day, the city had updated the task, the odor task force website, so I'm here to thank you. We have received a marked increase in requests for information from residents within our district, as well as District Mudd 26, and so the prompt response from the city is much appreciated. I'm here also to ask that the city remain in the lead of communication with regards to status of the situation. I'd also like to let the city know that Mudd 1 and Mudd 26 are here to support you in your ongoing efforts, and the dialogue between us, we would like to remain open as well. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to give a personal thanks to Councilmember Reed. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for ensuring that the safety of our students, as they transport to and from school, biking and walking remains at the forefront of conversation, and thank you to all the council members for your support with that as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Donna McLean. Thank you for being here, Ms. McLean. If you could just say your name and address.
Okay, my name is Donna McLean. I live at 2810 Newberry Court in Pearland, in Sor Lake. I looked at your agenda, and I, I'm a little bit nervous and a little bit worried that I, maybe mine isn't quite as important as all of the issues that y'all are addressing, but it's important to, so I'm here representing the senior citizens who attend, or members pay a due to be members at the NAP Senior Center in Pearland. I'm probably going to read it so that it won't take very long, because I'll forget to say something, but just upon retiring, I just could not wait to join a senior center and be with people, you know, taller than three feet, just the grandchildren, and when I did, it was, it was nice at first, and we had a real camaraderie with the staff and the management and all of the members, and we had a really good time, and it was wonderful. Well, what a difference two or three years can make. We've had, I'd estimate that about 20 or more former members don't come anymore. They're, they've either not a member anymore, or they just don't attend, and it's due to various reasons. Three or four staff members who were well-liked and respected were fired for mysterious reasons. We still don't know why. It almost seems as if a staff employee is pleasant and does their job in a happy manner, that they're, they're let go. Our present staff, four of which are relatively new, they're slightly pleasant if the director's not around. There's no interaction between the staff and members anymore, but our current concerns are, we, we have a different game room in the back that's significant, that's just for card playing, and we don't stay back there because we're antisocial, that's where the card room is, but the temperature is so unbearable. It's either extremely hot or extremely cold, and when we, we ask, numerous times we ask, when we get an answer, it's usually due to something's wrong, and we have a work order in, or it's on a timer and we can't change it, you know, you just kind of have to suck it up. But we can't go out in the main area because that's for eating and other things like that, so we just have to, you know, die in the summertime or wear coats in the winter to get the temperature like we want it. But at one point, I even went to the quilt room. There were three fans in there. It was so hot. It was over 100 in our room, and I went to the quilt ladies, they weren't, they weren't even using their fans, and I said, "May I please borrow a fan?", and they said, "Of course you may." And as soon as I hooked it up, one of the staff members came, no explanation, they just took it, and I said, "Wait, I just borrowed that. We're, we're hot, there's only one plug in the whole room, and that's where we have to put it." And they're like, "We need this in the exercise room." And then they called me in later, and called, and called me in as a disciplinary action, and said that I harassed the ladies, which is certainly not true.
Ms. McLean, if you could wrap it up.
Mostly, the, the activities are just limited, or they're repetitive, there's just, the staff doesn't interact with us at all. There's no equality, there's, there's, the action, who does our meals? We have some health concerns that way. They, they have some volunteers, and they touch our fruit or whatever. They don't wear gloves, and we've asked them, "Please wear the gloves," but they don't, and that's not enforced either. We have a monthly meeting, our primetimers, and we pay dues for that, and it just, it just gets out of control, and when we, we ask our leader, Kim Fig, we ask her to come and explain, we tried to give them money for Christmas, and she said, "We don't want it, we don't need it," because one of our members questioned, they thought that we did not offer it to them, and some of the members tried to ask her questions, and she said, "I don't have to answer your questions, we're not in third grade." So, it's, it's just the treatment, you know, we're just kind of, we don't celebrate anything anymore. And I, I would give it to you in writing, I had people sign, and I know that, I didn't try to hide it, and I know that they heard that, that I was going to be doing this, and so, yes, they have all of a sudden started trying to speak and be friendly, and, but I still felt like I needed to, to enter the concerns in an official capacity, and then that way, they could be addressed, and it's not just a he said, she said, or an argument.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, that completes the list of speakers for tonight.
Moving in our agenda to item five, which are public hearings. We have none tonight. Moving to item number six, Consent Agenda. I'll ask Councilmember Carbone to present Consent Agenda, but the staff has requested we pull item C, as it's not completed.
Mayor, I'd like to, also like to pull item G. Item G is engulfed.
Item G?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
And I'm going to pull item A.
C, U, C, C, G, and E, okay.
We're pulling off of the agenda for Consent Agenda portion, items C, G, and E. Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of Consent Agenda, items A through H, with the exception of C, E, and G, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council having a discussion on those items. Hearing done, Mr. Secretary, we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Since item E has been pulled by staff request, let's move to item E. Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, Resolution R. 2018-28, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city engaged DCMC shortly after the Harvey hurricane for professional services. Staff stayed over the Labor Day weekend and evaluated those, and Councilmember Colby awarded that down in the courtroom, initially for $200,000, just to get us started with that. DCMC provides us with expertise, so they bring in people who are very familiar with FEMA regulations and guide us and assist staff, not only wouldn't otherwise have the time, the bandwidth to be able to complete this work, but also make sure we put the city in the best position for the maximum reimbursements. We are deep into that, but we're about plus or minus 80% through what was awarded, and looking ahead, ask for an extension and expansion of the contract for the additional $200,000, which will take us past the home stretch. We will be filing two different parts of the reimbursements with FEMA as early as this week, for the debris removal and for the emergency protective measures, and they've been instrumental in that endeavor. This particular contract is reimbursable, plus or minus about $78,000 of the total, so about $8 out of $10, we foresee are going to be reimbursable for even this consulting services, so we do need to keep them at our hips, and they've been performing well for us of late.
Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I pulled it because of budgetary concerns. When I look at the agenda right up, it, it shows the amount budgeted and available is both zero. I know you'd sent an email out, but just for, for the public's sake, can you talk through the, how we're handling this from a budget standpoint?
Sure. So, obviously, as a hurricane expense, we had not anticipated this piece fully when we adopted the budget at the end of September, and, but the general fund expenditures will have enough capacity to be able to handle this during the year. We didn't have it budgeted, so we will be seeking the reimbursement for that from the federal government through the FEMA, and when we do reporting on the budget, we'll be able to give you some more precise numbers about how the savings will, but we're very confident that we'll have savings in the general fund that can more than cover this expense.
Thank you.
Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yeah, I was just looking on this, that to date, we've spent $156,443.
Sounds right, yep.
And we've got 80% done, and we need another $200,000 to accomplish the 20% remaining.
No, no, maybe you can explain that, Keith, or Trent, I'm sorry. I think 80% refers to what they've done of this phase of, or this piece of it, so.
No, the, the 80% is how much of the expenditures to date are direct administrative costs, which are reimbursable from FEMA, as we turn in our documentation to FEMA, so that's the 80% there. So, we, you know, to date, we've spent the 156, plus what we're working on this month, and so to work beyond this month, we need the contract extension. We expect them to be working with us for several more months, as we complete the different project worksheets for all the restoration work we'll be doing, and then we're also using them for some guidance on potential buyout programs, as well as FEMA gets into reviewing our documentation, help us respond to any questions or inquiries that way.
Okay, so those dollars that you're reflecting on there, it's not, that's a reimbursement out of the total amount? We don't have anything on what their cost is, and labor cost or whatever in this budget? I guess what I'm looking at over here is when we get down to the other, we had initially $200,000.
That's correct.
And then we're asking for another $200,000 through there, but I don't see anything on their rates or whatever it is. How do you pay them?
This is a, an extension of the existing contract, so there are hourly rates that were associated when we approved that initial contract. I don't have them off the top of my head, but we can provide those to you.
Okay. The dollars, whenever we get them back from FEMA, where is that going in our budget to the general fund, or where's it going? Or do we, no?
For category A, which is debris removal, we ran our cost as we remove debris through the solid waste fund, so the portion of it that we spent out of the solid waste fund will go back into the solid waste fund. I believe everything else would most likely come into the general fund, and then other ones that are project-specific, they'll go towards the specific restoration or repair projects.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, if there's nothing else, I just want to give a shout-out to the staff again that has been working on this, and appreciate, you know, Joel Hardy and Mr. Apperson and Mr. Upson, there's just a lot of people have been doing this over and above their regular duties, and working with consultants, obviously, and rely upon them for a lot, but the staff's been doing a great job, and as I said, got a report this morning that we're going to be able to file for, you know, upwards of $2.3 million, plus or minus, on the recovery, so that's going to get those monies back in the city's coffers pretty quick here.
Does that include the overtime that we spent?
We're putting in for that, but we'll give you a whole report about what we put in for and how that breaks out, so.
Any other question from council on this item, comment? Hearing done, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, moving to item number G.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, Resolution R. 2018-33, so moved.
Aye.
We have a, back to staff report.
So, the city has properties up along the Hickory Slough, around the Twin Creek development. We've got a former, I believe, wastewater plant there, and we're endeavoring to start to work with BD4 on a future stormwater improvement, and so want to convey, give them a drainage easement, so that they can do some, some parts of that work, and we, as council knows, we're looking at some larger projects, but this is something to get us going right now.
Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple. So, given that this is our property, but we're going to split, split off the front of it for a drainage improvement, given its proximity to Clear Creek, and the necessity for us to get additional land in this area only for drainage improvements, we're not going to, I don't foresee we're going to do anything with this land other than drainage improvements. Has there been any talk with BDD4 about just giving, allocating the entire tract to them, so that they have more options of what they can do here? I just don't see a value in us keeping in our inventory the remainder of the land, and still being responsible for the maintenance remainder of the land. If the only thing we're ever going to do with this is drainage, then why not give it to the Drainage District?
Councilman Perez, I think that it's a valid question, a valid statement. However, taking a look at as a whole, it's a, it's a component of a bigger picture, and so we're doing this little strip right now because they have plans to continue to widen Hickory Slough through, but incorporating this parcel with the long-range vision of what we can do in this area before we just give it up, we need to work with BD4 as well, and we're planning to do that, and we are in talks of that, how to incorporate that into a larger project as well. So, not turning it loose right now, but then working with our master drainage plan that we've been partnered with together for the past year and in some few months, getting that resolved, and heading forth and determining what are the best courses of action for that land use, before we just turn it all over. So, right now, this is just a component because they have work that they want to get done. They've already widened what I'll say is to the west of that parcel already, they bought that land, have already widened that. This is the next component, so they can continue and just widen it to their ultimate width, and then we'll continue from there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's part of our work, it on the choke points, making sure that we sort of take care of those. Mr. Council, any further question or comment? Hearing done, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, those items that were not on the consent agenda are handled under our new business section of our agenda, which is where we are today, right now. New business item one, Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading, reading of ordinance number 1517-2, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion, and staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Council, where we brought forward, we saw some edits to our Thoroughfare Plan that we use as a guide in our transportation planning, things that, you know, no longer made sense, minor errors, and we listed those on that scope, and things have been completed, wanted to update the map, so that we had that as a solid basis going forward. It's important to realize, these are, those kinds of map updates, issues, minors, that, and we will come forward through this calendar year with more thorough analysis and updates, so we can keep this whole document current, and council saw this at a joint public hearing. Your Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend positive consideration, and so we ask you to at least consider this on the first reading, so we can continue moving forward.
These items were discussed in our executive workshop last meeting, and I think it will open up a lot of intra-city mobility, which I think is a very good plus. Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I do. During the public hearing on this, we had talked about the dotted lines on, what road is that? Between Hatfield to O'Day and from Max to Garden. We talked about either making those straight across to where they come into Garden and dead-end there, and where they come to O'Day and dead-end there, and not bring that road all the way through, have traffic go either southbound or northbound on Garden, or, southbound or northbound on O'Day, up to the new McCard Road coming through, or back down to Broadway or FM 518, but this map still shows those dotted lines there, so are we not updating that to show that it's not going to go through?
Senator Moore, we, that was discussed and brought up as something that we could look at for the next round, that was not analyzed or brought forward as part of these minor updates, and we do believe that that would require at least some more analysis, and a little bit skittish about trying to, you know, make changes that might look like they make sense, just without some background or review of that. We did provide counsel, some of the traffic counts that show, and think that there's some logic for at least showing it up to the neighbor that you mentioned, so that would classify and fit better with the next round of edits that are coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Council having a further comment or question?
Yes, Mayor. Just following up with what you said, I know that we're talking about a larger travel flow analysis, where we look at our east-west corridors. I do think that maybe as an instruction to staff, we need to look at either abandoning item 44 and 45, or connecting them. I personally am in favor of abandoning them. We've already, at some point in past, the area where it was abandoned, I think we've kind of made a commitment to those people to go back on them. I don't think it's fair to them to keep moving back and forth. I know it's, it's up for discussion. I also know that there's an area that's impacted, or a couple of people who've expressed their concern about those impacted areas, so if we can offer some consideration to them about the unknown of what's happening with them, or any impacts associated with this Thoroughfare Plan, until we finalize it, I think that, that would be appreciated. A couple other small ones, they're more kind of cleanup, I think, or maybe it's just my inability to let minor things go, but we've got a couple of small, minor collectors that are shown on our Thoroughfare Plan, but they show outside of our ETJ. I just don't, I don't think that that, we can't, we can't do that, there's no, there's no purpose to our action, because we can't enforce it. So, that's item 26, which shows going through, I believe that's Iowa Colony's ETJ. Certainly, we can coordinate with Iowa Colony, but we, I mean, us taking a motion to say we're going to dedicate a minor collector through Iowa Colony, I think is advertising the wrong thing, and even though it's not numbered, there's that, that S-shaped piece of Thoroughfare east of Savannah Parkway, in the same area as 26 and 24, also extends outside of our ETJ. I'm perfectly happy leaving the component that's within our ETJ, but let's not advertise to our neighbors that we're expecting them to do something that we can't enforce. Otherwise, I want to, at least for these, these minor components right now, I think there's a lot of beneficial cleanup. Otherwise, I wanna, at least for these minor components right now, I think there's a lot of beneficial cleanup that we've needed for a while. I wanna appreciate staff's work. I know we're talking a little bit later about plat implications, so we can talk about what this map means in that arena at that point. But I wanna thank the staff for their diligence. I look forward to seeing what we're gonna do with a more major update.
One of the questions I'd have is how soon are we gonna start doing some of the intersection completions and tie-ins? Is there sort of a, we've got some that don't tie in completely, but we're gonna have to tie them in by construction work, and that'd be a capital improvements program?
That'd be correct. Any intersection improvements and things that we do in that nature to connect or have connectivity through our thoroughfares itself would be handled through the capital improvement program.
Oh, that's great, great, that's good. I think it's a great idea, it's time, years ago, we didn't need it because there wasn't a thing out there. Now there is. And further question, my council? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving into our agenda to New Business Item Number Two. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number 1546-1, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Staff report.
Mr. McDonald is here to talk to you about temporary housing post Hurricane Harvey, so. Thank you. Back in September, y'all passed an ordinance to allow the temporary use of personal trailers and RVs for those who suffered damage to their homes, which became unlovable to deal with the aftermath of Harvey. That original ordinance expired February 1st. Many of these homes are still in the construction phase or have even gotten there yet because they're still dealing with insurance issues. And so, we are seeking an expansion of that extension through February 2019, a one-year extension. One of the things that was specifically excluded in the original ordinance was the use of manufactured housing units through FEMA. And we've left that language in the code or in the ordinance presented to you, but I did wanna let you know that we are, that's what we're seeing the demand for. Where we have, I believe, five permits right now that have been applied for. They're on hold because we have not allowed those due to the ordinance. But I just wanted to go over with you kind of what they're asking. FEMA has two housing options. One is a recreational vehicle trailer. This is similar to what we are allowing through ordinance, and so we do allow these. If FEMA has granted one of these, looks like any other trailer that would show up, we would permit that. The secondary one, what's called MHUs, manufactured housing units, these look more like your typical manufactured homes, generic style. They come in three sizes. What we're seeing a request in is either the larger two bedrooms or the three-bedroom models. So, again, like I said, we are not allowing those due to the ordinance. But the, we do have a gentleman here, Jonah Chin, from the General Land Office, who's overseeing, working with the project to place people in housing, if you have any questions specifically about that. But we would, at a minimum, ask you to approve the ordinance, which would extend the current use of trailers, personal trailers, RVs, etc., campers for temporary housing through next year, February of next year.
All right, thanks. Great idea, thank you.
What would the timeline be for, that we're allowing these to be?
So, this, the extension within the ordinance is for one-year period to February 1st of next year, and then we would look again and see. The FEMA allowance for housing is through April, I believe, 25th of 2019, based on the declaration that was issued in August. They do an 18-month period. We figure, we would ask for a year, and then we can reevaluate at that point.
Okay, so we're not going as long as FEMA?
Correct, there'd still be additional period.
And then, once the FEMA's over, anything they're paying for has to be removed?
Correct, but if you pass this ordinance and you allowed FEMA trailers, and then come February 1st of next year, you did not extend it, then FEMA would begin removing those trailers from our city because they were no longer permitted.
Okay, because I'll be honest, I have no problem with what's up there now. It's not the most beautiful thing in the world. It's not something I think most people would wanna see permanently, but for someone that has no place to live, if that's the option, then that's the option. It's my take on it.
I kinda have the same question. What was, just if you could help educate us on what the thought process is for now a lot, not allowing those housing options?
I think originally, there was just concern of FEMA trailers coming in and not leaving. I think previous storms, there wasn't the oversight. Current FEMA requirements will have a caseworker assigned to each family who's in a house. They have to check in with them monthly to see that they are making progress on their home. They are meeting the requirements of staying in a FEMA trailer. And again, FEMA has assured us that even if we end our date earlier, they would abide by that and seek to resettle the families if needed and remove the trailers from the city.
How much of a demand is it for any of those options right now?
Like I said, right now, we have, I believe, five permits in for families, and then we've had multiple calls. We've just, we've told everybody that we're on hold until council took action on this ordinance.
If we were to allow these, where would they go? I mean, if you're in like a housing development, there's not room to put something like that in there. Is there space set aside that we could utilize to put some of these on?
Well, right now, by the ordinance, they would have to be on their lots. So, yes, a typical subdivision isn't gonna see the use of these because they're not gonna fit on the lot. What we're seeing, these are mostly older lots that are larger with potentially smaller homes, that there's been plenty of room. So, we've actually seen, I believe, a couple of the site plans have come in where they've met all the site setback requirements of the current zoning even, that there's enough room. So, it's not coming in on a, say, a 60-foot by 100 lot. It's more of the 80 to 90 and deeper lots.
I'd say, I think I'm with Councilmember Ordno in at least giving some leeway to allow them, but I'm also sharing your concern about what do we do? And this was my question even before he brought up that point, is that what do we do? What assurances do we have that these get removed in a timely manner? I think ultimately, there has to be some acceptance of us that we may end up holding some responsibility of removing these if the owners aren't willing to do it and if FEMA doesn't meet its standards. So, I think I would be okay with entertaining the idea of allowing these, particularly if we only have a handful in large-lot areas or large-lot subdivisions that are needed, but with a consideration of the 19 budget, that we have some budgetary item for us to go in there and remove it, and also some consideration of what that process would be for us to get it removed, how we would notify the owner, how would we identify whether there's still a need for them to be in there. You know, I think we're putting some pressure on ourselves to accept it, but I think if there's, if it helps people who are suffering, I think that it's something that we may wanna consider.
Yeah, and I hate to do this, as I won't be here when y'all have to deal with this problem, but I'd like to make a motion to strike the wording, "R FEMA alternative units", and allow the FEMA alternative units.
Second.
With that, is, the city attorney, is there any language we need in this ordinance to force our hand to consider a funding option in 19 for the removal of this or any other temporary housing?
For the remove, for the funding, you could take that up with the future budget. However, as you discussed, having something in place when you remove this, if you make this amendment, having the guidelines or whatever it is that you would need to remove it in place at the same time would be easier to enforce than for us to make the motion, adopt it today, allow the units, and then when we want to remove them, come up with that language then. I think it becomes a little bit more difficult. We do have FEMA saying that as long as we say that's it, they will remove it, but we don't know what FEMA will do six months, eight months, or a year from now. We don't know what that landscape is going to look like. So, while we could remove the exception to the exception now, the question will be, when we go to enforce that and remove the homes, what do we need in place to do that? And we don't have that language for you tonight.
And I think we have the General Land Office coming up to speak. I will say, I understand what you're saying, if that's what we need to do, that's fine, but I would like to see a meeting Thursday or Friday of this week with that language so we can get these pushed through and get people living somewhere.
Absolutely, and we can allow the travel trailer ones that are easily located in a driveway and are easy to move, and they fit the general site requirements that Mr. McDonald mentioned. You can allow that today, and then come back with the manufactured housing units, releasing that exception with additional language if we need to. But of course, we've got a subject matter expert who's at your disposal now.
Well, I'd say, is there an urgency for us to do one component today and then do the other tomorrow? Or at the next meeting? Or is there time enough to clean up some language, to put some responsibility on council in the next year's budget, to allow them both, and just at the next budget, or I'm sorry, at the next council meeting, just adopt one ordinance all at once?
So, we do have permits in now, and some of them have been in for a couple of weeks. And as I understand it, the hotel allowance has run its course? And so, those who have been living in hotels, I think about a week ago, have been asked to move out of those hotels if FEMA's no longer paying for those.
I think we do, we go ahead and pass this, and then we come back and address this one.
Yeah, let's hear from the expert.
Howdy, my name is Jonah Chin with the General Land Office, with the CDR team. And y'all are correct when it comes to city handling of removal of MHUs. Whatever regulations or policies that you would like to pass to ensure removal is up to y'all's purview. But for FEMA's process, whenever it comes to what they call revocation, which is revoking the permitting and the stay of an individual in an MHU, if the individual does not comply or does not respond to their caseworker who checks in on them monthly and has somebody who oversees that as well at the COG in the Houston Office and Area Council, if that individual does not reply or comply, then they will face steep penalties. And so, that is a $5.50 base flat fee for their stay and fair market value, adding up to approximately $950 per month of their inability to comply with the policy removing them from the MHU. If they are, as you know, worst-case scenario imagining, completely uncompliant, does not want to leave the MHU, the Department of Justice does get involved. And this is a policy that is new for disaster recovery because just, I think, two weeks ago was the removal of the last MHUs from Katrina in Louisiana. And so, they don't want that to happen again, so they're enforcing, using the Department of Justice for removals of individuals in MHUs.
Would, if we adopted a funding mechanism for us to remove it, is that a reimbursable component through FEMA?
I'm unsure about that. I will double-check for y'all.
How long, I don't know if you have experience with this or not, but how long from the time you start the process to involve Criminal Justice Department for removal does it take to actually remove the tenant?
So, if this ordinance were to be passed today, and the cutoff date was February 1st of 2019, within three to six months, the Department of Justice would be on the ground getting involved to remove the individual and transporting the MHU away.
Who pays the cost of setting up these temporary units, hooking up the water, sewer, electricity, and leveling them? Who's worth that cost?
FEMA and the GLO.
Mr. Mayor, we had a motion and a second to amend that initial item, so I don't know if there wants to be, if anybody wants to rescind that, but we had a motion and a second.
Maybe legal, can you chime in? Does that amendment cover generally what you understand we're trying, what we're trying to accomplish?
If I heard the motion, and if I heard the motion correctly, it was to remove the restriction for FEMA alternative housing units. And as it stands now, I think that that would allow the FEMA travel trailers, just not the, what we have, the MHUs.
Well, that's not what I'm.
That's not what, and I'm glad that I clarified then, so.
No, if FEMA approves that, what I was hoping to do with that motion was to allow FEMA manufactured housing, but not any manufactured housing. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Because that way, we do have another authority to help us kind of back up the removal process when that time comes, was my thought process.
So, I think we wanna eventually, or at least what I'm hearing from Mr. Ordno, we wanna allow the MHUs, but we want the ordinance to allow the MHUs to have a funding mechanism for the city to take responsibility for us for their removal subsequent to research of what that process would be and how we would be reimbursed for that. So, I'm not sure how we would clean that up in this one.
And we can come back with additional guidance and language on that, but there is a motion and a second on the floor now. So, unless that gets voted down or it gets amended again.
Yeah, we'll take heed to reamend it.
But what, I have no intention of rescinding unless legal tells me I'm putting the city in a legal hardship. And then we need to look at it, and I would like to meet sometime later this week and talk about it. I don't want people that are about to be kicked out of hotels without a place to go.
And I can only say that starting with the end in mind is always what I would recommend that we do. When we don't have the end in mind with how to remove these other than to ask FEMA to remove them and tell their caseworker that our ordinance expires at this date, as we've heard from, and I believe it was Mr. Lynn. I believe he said that justice or the Department of Justice would get involved three to six months after February. So, it comes down to what kind of pressure will council be willing to, or complaints will council be willing to accept after February of next year when the other neighbors are saying this is still in the driveway or the front yard, and it's becoming problematic. They're not making any progress towards getting a permanent solution.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I wanna have a funding mechanism in there because I don't wanna tell our citizens it's not our fault, we gotta go talk to your FEMA or the FEMA director. I mean, I want us to have some responsibility for the removal. I just want it cleaned up, and I, we need to do something tonight because there are people who need it. So, what do we do tonight that doesn't prevent us from doing what we, allowing the MHUs, but with the funding mechanism at the next council meeting?
And actually, we're all getting together on the 17th. I'd be fine with us taking action on the 17th, but I want it done as quickly as possible. I just want to realize Saturday.
We do have.
How many?
My issue is if my amendment is going, if legal thinks we need to have the end and in place at the same time as we do this, I will rescind, and we will wait until Saturday, if they think they can get it together by Saturday.
Let me ask.
Anybody else wanna jump in?
How many, do you say we have, four or five?
Five right now, five trailers.
Do we know the location?
I don't have the applications with me, no sir.
If they wanted a MHU that sits three bedrooms, 60 feet, do they have a place to put it?
The site plans we've seen all show that they'll fit on their lots.
They would put it in the driveway or whatever?
Yeah, their driveway, the side of the house, one's in the rear of the house.
Well, we don't, nobody's called the question yet. I'm fine with either way, as long as staff is fine. But what I'm hearing from staff is they'd like to have the end process when we do the beginning, and I'm saying if that's it, if that's the way staff wants it, I'm fine with that. I would just like to do something by Saturday.
What if we, just offering a suggestion, what if we leave the amendment as is, and then in the subsequent meeting, we have the funding mechanism as its own ordinance, funding mechanism for removing temporary FEMA housing?
And I don't know if that'll, it'll be a funding mechanism that we use. I mean, absolutely, we could look at the fiscal part of it, but more than the funding, we need to have some sort of process or criteria as to how we're going to remove these or what conditions we're gonna remove these under in the future so that we could be very clear with FEMA and with the people who are getting these. It's always easy to let them come in, it's more difficult to let them go, as you heard. They just now, two weeks ago, removed the ones from Katrina, and we don't want to be in that situation. Or some people would suggest you don't want to be in that situation because the people aren't taking the efforts that they need to have a permanent solution.
Mayor, I think that may be the best, as you said, suggested by the council, I think that may be the best thing now to allow things to move forward and deal with, deal with the funding afterwards, or deal with the process afterwards, I'm sorry.
We do have a motion second on the floor. If the council does not wanna continue it, you can vote it down.
For the amendment, yes, sir.
This is just for the amendment. They're making amendment to the motion, original motion, we, former secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Amendment passes seven to zero.
Okay, now we're back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion?
Yes.
Quick, oh, curious?
One quick. So, could we have something in place Saturday?
For what?
For the funding mechanism, or for the, how to handle the withdrawal?
How to handle the removal.
How to handle the removal?
Yeah, not funding.
Well, it had to be, it had to be by Wednesday, because it had to be posted.
We're going to be back on the 28th.
You can post, you can post it, you can post it Wednesday, doesn't mean it has to be completed.
I mean, right now, we are, our plan is, we send code enforcement out there to tell them that their trailer or their MHU is no longer in compliance with the city's ordinance, and give them a deadline. If they don't, they don't comply, then they would be issued a citation, and we'd handle it through the city courts.
And my take was, I thought we could do it later, but I was hearing that it might be better to do it sooner.
Get out of the way.
Since we're talking about something that removes federal property, do we have to get FEMA's approval for an ordinance that we pass, or amendment to an ordinance to remove this?
But I talked to multiple people with FEMA, and then again, with the General Land Office, and nobody indicated that they had any issues with our ordinance, that we were fine moving ahead, and that they would comply with the terms of our dates.
And where do we store these trailers until the government takes possession of them?
I think if we, if we were capable, if we were able to get the residents to move out, because we were going to tell them, I think at that point FEMA would be able to come pick them up. I think that was their issue, is how, it would take them a certain amount of time to get the habitants of those houses, of those units out, and then they could take them out. If we, if we're more successful in that, and we end up with an empty trailer, then FEMA will pick up the trailer.
So, the delay with FEMA is getting the people out of the trailers?
Yes. And that was, sorry, and that's, of course, with the complications of Katrina, that's, of course, why it took so long. They didn't have those very strict enforcement mechanisms up until this point. With this enforcement regulation of removal, if the city decided to create one in itself, that would probably be a duplication of the FEMA one as well. Whether each one, if there were to be a violation, the removal processes would be initiated immediately.
Mr. Secretary, we do have an amended motion on the table.
Mayor, can I ask?
No, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So, with the amended motion, we're allowing travel trailers and MHUs, and once it expires, we're going to have code enforcement that'll be able to start proceedings to try to get the habitants out. What's wrong? What are we, why are we still talking? I don't, am I missing something here? And we're talking about five trailers, maybe? Even if it doubles, we're talking about 10?
And we already have residents and trailers now.
But not these?
No, and personal trailers and RVs, living in front of the yards, in the back of the yards, that we've left, we haven't talked to until we came back and wanted to get your direction first. So, yeah, code enforcement's ready to move however you wish it to move.
Yeah, I think...
If I'm not missing anything, let's vote.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
We do have amended motion on the table, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. All that tucked away neat, let's move to item, new business item number three. Councilmember Ordno?
Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-31, so moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Secretary, we're ready for staff to report.
Thanks, sir. Our Public Works Department, and they broker this service for other departments when needed, is in need of professional services with pumps and other mechanical equipment. We did bid this out, unfortunately, we got one bidder. So, we do need this help, definitely. It's an on-demand, on-need kind of service, and we did provide an estimated amount, like we've done on some other contracts. Council may be, recall and be aware, we will look at how this is structured for the next time, see if we can break out any elements and get more interest in it and more specialization. But STP, I believe, has done this kind of contract for us in the past, and recommend consideration for this one year. And it is renewable after that, if we wanted to.
Okay, is everybody happy with that?
I have a question, Mayor. How many companies bid on the contract last time? Was it just STP? I don't remember. I think there was one other company. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir. Last time, there was just the one respondent. It was the contract period prior to that, in 2012. We had a second vendor who undercut STP by a percentage. We awarded, within four to five months, we were experiencing extreme delays in getting equipment back online and back in service, so we wound up terminating that contract within six months. That was with a local contractor in Manville. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
You got a couple of questions. So, the tracking for the last few fiscal years shows last year, we were at about 130,000 more than what we're estimating for this year. Where do we come up with the 650? Are we comfortable that that's going to cover us? Was, are we saying that 2017 was anomalous?
Eric's going to...
Eric's better speak to that a little bit. Yes, sir. Honestly, this is our best guess at what we're looking at this year. Last year, we had some equipment failures, some headworks at some of the wastewater treatment plants that had to be rebuilt as an, on an emergency basis. So, it's our guess as to where we're going to be maintenance-wise for the year. As you will see, I believe it was two years ago, we only spent $500,000. So, it does fluctuate by a significant amount, depending on how the year goes.
Okay. And the other concern I have, the 15% over, over for any parts and materials, is there a limit to the amount of material or the cost of the material that they're allowed to purchase on our behalf at the 15%? I mean, if they're buying, are we going to allow them to buy a $100,000 piece of equipment and then get $15,000 just for ordering it for us, or is that something we take responsibility for?
Typically, if it's, example, an odor control unit, we will bid that out separately. We will have them come in and do the fabrication of whatever we need to do to install that piece of equipment. But on your larger equipment, no, sir. If we need to buy a pump or something like that, that we contend to keep in stock, which we do for replacement, they typically take care of repairs and do not buy equipment for us.
Is there, what rule kind of governs when that, when we allow them to do it and when our staff does it?
It's typically just on an, per occasion basis.
Is there a...
And that typically lands with me when I make that decision.
I, you know, I don't, I don't want to prevent this from going through. I'd like, maybe, because it's probably not a good answer that we can come up with right now, but I'd like to see, when this contract comes up again, there's some language in there that caps the price of, the price they can spend at a 15, 15% is a pretty big margin. I mean, that's a large, that's a large value for material cost. So, I'm not questioning whether that's justifiable. Obviously, we only have one bidder, so if we say no to that, we're going to screw it ourselves. But I'd like to see in future contracts if we can have a cap on, so we at least know how much, what our exposure is beyond the 650.
Yes, sir. And we can go through, and I believe we did it in, for fiscal year 2016, we came up with an itemized, what we spent for shop time, what we spent for field labor time, and what we spent on equipment with the markup on that. So, we have prepared those reports in the past, and I can send you the same thing for FY17.
Oh, yeah, I'd love it.
Okay, we'll do that. Don't walk away.
I got a question for you. I see here that since 2014 up through 2017, we spent about 2.5 million.
Yes, sir.
This will put us over 3 million on there. And what is the main reason for this? Is it just, we got wore out equipment, or is this something we can expect from now on?
Some of it is deferred maintenance, pumps break down, we have redundant systems. In the past, things were let go when we had redundant equipment. We are on a proactive role now. We have redundant equipment for a reason, so we do not have failures impacting the service to the public. So, this is actually a lot better than it was in years prior to that. But yes, we're doing what we can, sir.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, we've been getting a lot of response, or response coming in on water and the problems that all we're having, but is there anything that we can do to maybe help alleviate some of this, spending, you know, a half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars a year?
Some of this will be touched on on Saturday with future staffing tied to the surface water treatment plant. One of the things that we're proposing in conjunction with that surface water treatment plant is actually establishing a maintenance division in Public Works that will be dealing directly with the upkeep, not manufacture of metalwork, et cetera, but the pulling of pumps, delivering the pumps to the winding shop, or to the shop that's going to rebuild the impellers, et cetera, and we'll be bringing some of that in-house. At least, we're making a recommendation as an offset to these expenditures.
Okay, so we'll see something Saturday that gives us pro and con on both of these, maybe to help, you know, cut some of the additional spending on it. And so, this contract has a one-year with two one-year renewal options.
Yes, sir.
And is there anything on the markup that says they can't go beyond what they're, what they're paying now? Are we paying them? Or is it whatever?
If their cost for a piece of equipment is $100, we pay them $115. And it's not retail for the equipment. They get their discount. That discount is passed on to us.
Okay. I look forward to listening to you Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further comment from council? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving to item number four, Councilmember Little, would you read the caption of the numbers of the resolution, and our city attorney will read it to the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R 2018-27.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title and an access drainage easement to certain property for the Old Alvin Road Detention Project, being fee simple title to all that certain 3.0023 acre out of Lot 25W Zeklinsky subdivision, according to the plat thereof as filed in volume 29, page 43, Brazoria County deed records, HT and BRR Company Survey, abstract 233 Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, and being out of that certain tract as described in a deed dated 8/21/2006, from John Alexander to John Alexander Family Limited Partnership, as filed in the official records of real property of Brazoria County at clerk's file number 2006-050334, and an access drainage easement to all that certain 0.6623 acre out of Lot 25W Zeklinsky subdivision, according to the plat thereof as filed in volume 29, page 43, Brazoria County deed records, HT and BRR Company Survey, abstract 233 Pearland, Brazoria County, Texas, and being out of that certain tract as described in a deed dated August 21, 2006, from John Alexander to John Alexander Family Limited Partnership, as filed in the official records of real property of Brazoria County at clerk's file number 2006-050334, for the construction and maintenance of drainage and detention pond improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
You've heard the reading of the, so moved.
Second.
Motion second. Now, we are in, staff to report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's well underway with a couple of coordinated and major infrastructure improvements to our existing road and drainage water sewer network. East Orange is going well, and I believe we made a pretty big traffic switch there this morning. Another project that's related and that ties in, that's been long planned, is expansion of Old Alvin, recognizing the traffic demands there. This is from the bridge just south of that, which was designed for the future expansion, all the way up to McCard Road. And this particular item provides the land for the drainage that's required for that project. We've had discussions with the property owner, and just apart on price, they have worked with us, and I believe we've gotten access to that. So, the eminent domain is launching that formalized process to winnow in on a fair price for that. So, this is integral and required for the project. Have to have somewhere for that drainage to go. It's all been part of that plan, and need to move forward on this.
With staff having to complete that report, I'd, thank you. Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Was the property owner, was anything discussed with him on the detention? If it was possible, maybe we made that detention a little bit larger, since the front side of the property is still facing Old Alvin Road and could be utilized by the property owner for a business or whatever it's zoned for, you know, at the time. But would they be willing to have that detention a little bit larger, to maybe accommodate something that they would build there, in lieu of the money?
The use of the eminent domain process requires, require what's necessary for the public purpose of the projects at this point. However, that wouldn't preclude them from requesting and working with us in the future for a potential expansion of that pond, so that you wouldn't have two adjacent ponds, and you can utilize the land more efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just real quick on the alignment here, is the, is the plan, all the drainage comes to the easement? The easement has a storm sewer that goes to the pond, and the pond outfalls into Old Town Ditch?
Drainage runs parallel to Old Alvin, and then this will, runs, it takes upstream, will take water off of Old Town Ditch and go into storage. So, you're basically taking that portion of water off that Old Alvin will then put into Old Town Ditch.
So, we're taking water out of Old Town Ditch to lower the water surface elevation, to allow the water to come through?
Correct, Councilman, I had a frog in my throat there.
That's fine. So, the easement is just merely to give us access for maintenance? It's not for a storm sewer component?
That's correct. It is a maintenance easement.
What provisions are we allowing for the developer in that easement? Are they going to be allowed to, are they going to be completely excluded from being able to utilize that easement in the future, or would they be able to utilize it for its own commercial? So, let's say they wanted to put a commercial development, they'd be able to pave over it, so long as they don't block our access?
We're also taking that easement also as partially with, in partnership with BD4 as well. And so, that's also going to ultimate width of that detention, of that Old Town Ditch as well.
So, we think the easement's temporary until it gets, the wideway gets expanded?
Right.
Okay.
That sort of relieves some of the strain, I'm sorry, of Old Town Ditch, and, which is one of the boogers and one of the tigers doing the RV event. Does that connect into the, to that Town Ditch stream?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff, have any further comment on that?
Nope.
Staff, council having a question or comment at this point? Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to new business item number five, Councilmember Perez, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number Two Thousand Eighteen dash twenty-nine, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So, the city's building out a fiber ring network that will support our infrastructure, particularly the water and sewer. It's critical for our regular operations, have reliable, you know, as much as possible real-time information about the functioning of the plants, levels, twenty-four-seven. So, we've got a plan, and this particular element is to make a long run of fiber to the Reflection Bay Plant, and I believe this was part of all the planning and budgeting for that plant, takes it up Kirby from Fire Station Five over to Reflection Bay, so the amount is as noted, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We are after, since it's going to be there and done, but for this, we wouldn't be doing it, but with it, we'll be able to also tie in some of our traffic signals, and hang that off the same system, and communicate with that too, and get better reliable communications, and very fast on that.
Okay. Council having a question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Couple of things, what's the, what's the construction method that they're going to be utilizing for this?
It'll be directional drill, similar to what we did on Bailey Road.
What's the, what's the length of the directional drill?
Well, the total distance of the project's eleven thousand feet, so you'll probably be hitting bores at about five hundred linear feet, and then doing tie-ins, and then trying to get as long pulls on the fiber as possible. That's similar to what they did in Bailey.
My biggest concern, and maybe Bailey was a good experience, I feel like we're okay with this, I have no problem with the award of the contract, but we're going to, if we award it tonight, according to this, ten days, we'll get them cut loose. That puts them basically in the heart of the contract about the time schools letting out. I don't know what their construction phasing is, I can't imagine that they're going to be able to do this without closing down some lanes on occasion. How are we, well, one, do we have a traffic control plan already in place? If not, how are we going to control traffic control? And more particularly, how are we going to, I'm really concerned that we keep these guys in any construction away from Merrick and Nolan Ryan until school lets out, so get them into June before they do that component, and then possibly even look at, I don't know how this was bid, but maybe even weekend work for the portions on Shadow Creek Parkway, if lane closures are necessary.
Well, first of all, let me talk a little bit about Shadow Creek Parkway. On Shadow Creek Parkway, we're actually tying into the fiber that's there existing already.
Okay.
There's a ninety-six pair, or a hundred and forty-four pair, if I recall correctly, from TexDOT when they put that in, turned it over to us. So, we'll be tying into that along Kirby, but then picking it up at Reflection Bay, and then tying it into the wastewater, into the water treatment facility.
So, no construction on Shadow?
We'll have some tie-ins here and there.
But no lane closures?
Not necessarily, that's correct.
Okay.
With regards to Kirby, we'll work with the contractor in terms of the traffic control plan, there is one, it's our typical TexDOT standards that we utilize on our traffic control with regards to that. We will then work around that, and also coordinate with the schools, to make sure that we don't impede that walking traffic. But, the plan is to continue work, we also have, I would say, is a spring break coming up as well in March, so that's an open time, those nine days are a good time to be able to run through there as well. So, we'll coordinate with them on the schedule.
Okay. What about south of five eighteen? Is there, are we tying into any of that, or are we just, are we constructing down to the fire station?
Yes, we'll be going all the way down to Fire Station Number Five, there's a conduit that we need to tie in there, and to bring that through.
Are we planning for that to be night or weekend work? Well, certainly not the weekend, but maybe...
I would stay leery of the weekend, but we will talk to the contractor about trying to get that at off-peak times.
Okay.
Any other question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. So, we know the Reflection Bay wastewater treatment plan is under construction now, and with the growth out there, it probably won't last long before we'll be having to upgrade it again for capacity-wise. I'm not a fiber optic expert or anything, but are we putting enough fiber optic connectivity here to allow for any future growth, so that we don't have to do this again?
Councilman Moore, that is correct, we are, also, this is a four-inch conduit that has four one-inch interducks in it, so we can always pull more fiber if necessary, but we're pulling in a ninety-six strand, and there's plenty of capacity, as Dan has informed me quite well, plenty of capacity in that type of string.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number six, Councilmember Owens.
Consideration of Possible Action Resolution Number R Two Thousand Eighteen dash twenty-one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You'll recall that we brought a change order two weeks ago, council deferred pending some additional information. We've done that, and tried to explain that in this particular A R. Bottom line, we had bid the sprinkler system, so we got good pricing with the original contract as a bid alternate, and as we've been through the process and looked at that, we should have awarded this and had this integral to the system from the get-go, the building size and the lot dimensions, the use, et cetera, demands that, and so we just frankly blew that in terms of, I believe, a little miscommunication internally, in terms of, you know, whether this possibly, the building could, you know, building size was moving around a little bit, and whether, you know, this could, cost could be avoided. Obviously, I think it's a good safety measure to do, but bottom line, it needs to be done in any case with the building. The exterior aside, we still need this for the building itself, and so recommend that investment, and again, that, it's not like it's an add-on completely, we had bid that as an alternate, so we can move forward on that, so.
That's kind of a double whammy type it, with the, fixing the water line as well, so I think that's a good move. Council having a question or comment on this item?
I do.
I do.
Okay, first I do down here from my left.
Okay. So, are we saying we're going to sprinkle the open air facility?
No, sir.
You know, that's good.
It's not required.
Yeah, good, thank you, thank you. Okay, one of the other questions, and this is just, you know, asking a question, it seems like the contractor that we have, has about, what, three projects ongoing with us right now? Library, City Hall, and a center over there, and I know we're experiencing some delays of not having enough people, or not having other people, like the elevators and stuff like that, they're all busy somewhere else, and the I T stuff, this, is, this part of it, is, this is something that, that we do have staff, or he has staff, or people that can go ahead and get started on this?
If he's here, I can let him answer that directly, but I do want to clarify a couple of things, that on the, the elevators at City Hall, there were some other repairs that were outside of their contract, that we went directly with the, with an elevator company on, that was associated with some of that, and then the I T installation, and A V installation, that's also separate contractor.
Yeah, I don't leave the impression that, you know, the remodeling's a complicated job, and as Trent mentioned, they're very specialized, anybody would have to sub out or anything if we did direct on the elevators, so that's not on them, and the, same with the A V, electronic pieces, you know, some carpentry work, but everybody's, you know, struggling around for that, and, you know, we've changed the, changed elements as we've gone into it, and learned things, and et cetera, so, you know, I don't think any of that's on them, on this particular thing. They've performed well, they're winding that one down, and Library's also going to be winding down pretty quick here, too.
Okay, the only thing I'm asking that far, we have schedules, I'm sure, on all of this, do we have something, if they start exceeding the schedule, that impacts us at the city, or any kind of dollar amount, or anything like that?
Yes, sir, all of our contracts include liquidated damages, I would say, I believe they're well ahead of schedule on the Library project, and I don't believe that where we stand on the schedule for City Hall, that, I think some of the delays associated with the elevators and those sort of things, we would not be able to put that back on them.
Why?
It was done, so...
It's under their contract.
No, 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 they, they do have some work in the elevators there, but we had one of the elevators that basically failed, I can't remember if it was right after we awarded, or around the time we were awarding the contract, that was not part of their contract, we went out under separate contract to get that work done, so that was not under their control or part of their contract.
So, the elevator right now is not part of their contract, it's an independent contract that we have?
The repairs to the, I guess, mechanics of the elevator was not in their contract, those had to be completed before they could get in and do the internal refurbishment of the elevators that was part of their contract. So, the bigger delays, we're getting the mechanical repairs completed.
All right.
Counsel having other questions about comments at this point? I don't hear any.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask, what's the occupant load of the nature center?
Councilmen should be with the pergola involved, it'd be right around three hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, without the open air pavilion?
I want to say it's two hundred and sixty-eight-ish.
So, where to redesign this? If you were to take this out to somebody that was in business, would they have built the pavilion, what, a foot or two away from the building, called it detached, and not triggered these requirements?
I will need to, I'll need to defer to the fire marshal on that question, on what the true distance is required between separation of buildings?
I think another piece of that is that that was not the only trigger for, that we hit in the code for requiring the sprinkler, the other one had to do with the length of the, the fire apparatus attack hose lines have to reach within a hundred and fifty feet around each side of the building, and that is another requirement that the building did not meet, so...
So, the site plan should have had a fire lane back there?
I don't believe with the site that was selected, and many years ago, that there was, there's really an ability to have a drive that would have gone around the building, and I think that probably would have exceeded the cost of the sprinkler system as well.
That is in compliance with our fire code, our fire marshal is here.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, your question?
Make a few comments?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Emerson said, that, that also became an issue, was the reach, we require a hundred and fifty, or the code requires a hundred and fifty feet, not either direction, where the hoses can reach in the back, with a sprinkler system, you can go up to two hundred and fifty feet, the original drawing when it came in, they didn't meet that one hundred and fifty feet code requirement.
Okay, is there any variance on that?
No, sir, not for life safety.
All right, thank you.
I would just comment that adding fire sprinklers is a life safety issue, and I don't think we're setting a good example if we try and find ways out of putting life safety mechanisms in our, in our public buildings, or the buildings where our employees work. I mean, I think, look, it's, it's a cost overrun, it's a bit of a headache, I understand, but we should default more towards having sprinklers than not having sprinklers. I have this argument with developers all the time, you're arguing about making a building significantly less safe, and significantly more flammable. If there is somebody who was in that building, and it caught on fire, and they had, we had loss of life, we wouldn't care a bit about saving ninety thousand dollars, or how far this, this pavilion was from the building. I think it's, frankly, I think it's an argument we shouldn't be having. We should have required them, and budgeted, to have sprinkler systems in this building to start, even if we were close to the threshold of requiring it by occupancy, we should have had it in the first place. So, I don't think we should be arguing our way out of this.
I don't think we're arguing our way out of it, Council. I think what it was in our last discussion, that we had it for the main building there, and what triggered it was the open air building that we understood triggered to go in, because it'd been value engineered out, and the open air facility that was attached to it caused it to be sprinkled. So, that was a concern, it was not saying really a concern with the first part of the facility itself, it was just the open air, and, you know, not understanding why that was looking at that time to be sprinkled on there, you know, for that one, so, it's not the other one, the other way, I mean...
It's that we're close to the threshold in occupancy, the pavilion pushed us over the threshold for occupancy to require the sprinklers, there was an ancillary reason, which was, had to do with the fire lane, and then not having the hundred and fifty-foot at all points of the building. If you've ever been to one of the exhibits where the, our fire marshal, fire marshals show how quickly they can put out a fire, or how quickly a fire can take over a building when the sprinkler's not there, I would say, you would never be compelled not to put in the sprinkler system regardless of the occupancy of the trigger.
Call the question.
I just don't think we should be talking about this.
Exactly.
Call the question.
What is your question? No, we're ready.
What is your?
Let's, Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
No.
Councilmember Moore.
Reluctant, yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Unreluctantly, yes.
Motion passed six to one.
And most of the cost of that would be putting in the water line, so that the, the cost of the sprinklers would be very minimal compared to the possibility of something happen. Moving in our agenda to item number nine, council mayor issues for future city council agenda.
Clay?
I'll...
Turn that over to you.
So, this is a mayor and council request for information, B D C, just for background, requires that if there's addition for five hundred square foot, that requirements of various are triggered, and there's some good information in the packet about why that is, there's a good table in there about the different requirements that, you know, once you start to add on to and change a building, you know, bring it into compliance for drainage and other kinds of things, and so, we've tried to explain that. I think that at its root, the idea is that rather than have a square footage trigger, might it be appropriate to have a percentage of the existing building, I believe that might make some sense, and, you know, if you go that route, then what's the number? The original suggestion as a starting point, I think, was fifteen percent, and then, you know, lifetime, I guess, of thirty, you know, we looked at some other places and scale, and maybe, you know, we threw out five percent, but one correction, we'd estimated the impact on a commercial building, and then on schools, we got some information from them that actually, if you went to five percent, their expansions are big enough that it would trigger on all of them, you know, they range from like, you know, up to nineteen or twenty percent on a couple, but, you know, if you did ten percent, that would get all but two of them, where they're doing a lot more work, so, just want to put that back your head, but the main thing is, this is a general ordinance provision, it's not specific to particular users or anything like that, and so, that's, that's the background for this one.
Any other question or comment at this point?
Mayor, I was one of the council members that asked for this agenda item, and my reasoning is just that, to me, a flat number makes no sense, a percentage is a much fairer way to, to do this, because five hundred square feet on any of our homes is a decent percentage, but five hundred square foot on H E B, for instance, isn't much if anything, and another issue, which I hadn't really thought about until this issue came up, is I've always steered people away from a P D, because I felt like it gave more government... because I felt like it gave more government control onto a private development than, than just going by the UDC. But what the PD does do is it protects you forever. You can go in and add on to that and you're still under the PD. Where the UDC changes and you don't have that protection, you had five hundred feet right now and you've got an update to everything that's in the UDC. And I, personally, I just don't see where that promotes small business growth. I don't see where it promotes growth in already developed areas. You know, before something was stated about, why hasn't this come up before with other school districts? And the reason is this is the first time anybody's done any major renovation. New construction is one thing. And nobody's arguing about new construction. But it is, as we age and we have areas of Pearland that have aged, how are we going to allow those areas to grow and redevelop?
And I was the other council member that brought this to the agenda. And one of my reasons was is that some of the older businesses in Pearland would like to expand their business. But if they do, then they lose their grandfather clause. And they're required to do all kind of extra stuff, i.e. shrubbery trees, sidewalks that start from nowhere and end to nowhere, et cetera. And it's an added cost to those business owners that frankly, a lot of them just can't afford to do when they're already trying to spend money to expand their business and grow their business. So I think this is a, a good plan as to do it a percentage of the square footage. I, like Councilmember Ordno said, you know, it's the best way to do it. And not limiting it just by square footage, but a percentage of it.
So I would, I would disagree. Including it by percentage of square footage, that doesn't really mean a whole lot. We can't, what we need to talk about is predictability. Cost is certainly a component. But changing the ordinance just because there's at some point, somebody may not afford it. Well, at some point, there's going to be a threshold where development and redevelopment is going to become difficult for somebody who's got a tight budget. We have always preached that variances should not be allowed based on a financial hardship. Now we're saying, well, we're just going to change the UDC based on financial hardship. To your point about PDs, look, we can change a PD. We just did it with the uses. They're not getting further protected in the UDC. We can make modifications wholly to a PD if we choose as a body.
And we've forgotten to do it both times and had to go back and redo it.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still a possibility. Look, I'm with you in that we need to change. It's just about what is the fair and predictable change? And what is a fair and predictable change that can be uniformly applied throughout the city? We have a couple of components with respect to our development code that I don't think are necessarily fair. Our, our trigger for plat, the development has to be platted based on its current configuration or proposed configuration, regardless of its plat history, is unusual for our area. Not all that, not too many cities require that. But bear in mind, the state has their own plat rules. If you're under five acres, it doesn't matter whether we want you to plat, you have to plat to subdivide it. So there are components to that that are triggered outside of our criteria. You know, percentage of increased square footage, well, so we're saying if they go out there and spend a whole bunch of money on new site improvements that don't touch the building and they feel like they have, a business has the ability to do that, that we would not require them to come in compliance to the UDC? So our back door could be, we would say, an outdoor pavilion is not necessarily an expansion to the existing building. Or we come up with rules where there's all these back doors.
It would be any additional square foot?
I think there's, I think that there are rules in place that we already have, but they're based on percentage, based on the amount they're investing in the development, not an arbitrary number which is their, their expansion.
That's not my understanding.
The unify, or the, the IBC says if you increase or if you are reinvesting in your development over its, over fifty percent of its value, you have to bring it up to code. I will tell you that a rule of thumb we used to follow is if you trigger the IBC, you trigger all the other compliance. I'm fine with that. One rule for all of them. So if you don't trigger a hundred or fifty percent of evaluation or fifty percent improvements of the evaluation of the building, then you don't have to necessarily build sidewalks and you don't have to tear out driveways and bring in the performance with our access management. If we're not doing that, then maybe a percentage to, of their, of what they're investing onto the land. But the square footage is arbitrary.
But right now, it is a square foot.
That's what, I don't like the square footage.
Okay.
I think we should change it, but I think we should change it to something that is evaluated based on, that is tied to the evaluation of the property and not necessarily an arbitrary number about their expansion.
So can we agree to send staff back to some direction as to give us a couple of options, maybe?
I think that's good.
Yeah. I mean, and see if we can increase the minimum, but, you know, maybe if one, one option is relates to our footage, we have another option, maybe just a general, you know, requirement?
Can I ask staff when the five hundred square foot was put in? Because I had also heard the fifty percent of value in the past.
I don't have the date on that five hundred, but we can get that for you. The fifty percent value is in the code as well today.
Right.
So if you do fifty percent of value, not only do you have to meet your building codes, but you also have to bring up UDC codes as well.
Everything up, right.
Yeah. So that's one of the, there's different, different levels in the code and that's one of them.
So, so, and are you saying go to just one instead of two different levels?
I think that we, I think we agree there needs to be something to change, but I don't think the square footage personally is going to be the best tool. And maybe we need to ask staff to, to develop, look at, look and research some of the other cities that do this. I know Baytown's got an ordinance that triggers it based on the evaluation of the overall property. There are better tools in the toolbox than I think than what is proposed. Not to question the motivations. I just, I'm not comfortable with that being a good enough trigger. I think it unfairly throws certain people into compliance, even though it raises the threshold. And I think it unfairly takes people out of compliance. So I think the evaluation, if you're, if you're looking at, well, I won't argue that. I think there's other tools that we can use. I also think that we need to reevaluate our plating requirements altogether. I mean, when do we trigger a plat? Do we trigger it, right, we trigger right now for any permit that's issued other than a few exceptions. Do we just say, look, unless, if, as long as your tract is platted in some configuration, and so you meet state law?
Regardless of how old it is.
Regardless of how old it is. And maybe we can say it's, it's got to be a city plat. So if we annexed, there's some difficulty there. But I know that what we were talking about, alluding to in the thoroughfare plan is there are people who are required to plat because of an expansion, even if it's a large expansion. They come into the thoroughfare plan and now they've got to give up land for, for compliance with the thoroughfare plan. And we're taking it without compensation because we can by right via plat.
Yeah. And I've asked legal to look at that and we can talk about that when I...
I think we could do both, both changes to the UDC at the same time. Discuss what modifications we want to make to the plating process. I know we've talked about it enough to say we are not comfortable with what we have. And also discuss how we want to trigger compliance with the UDC and also the engineering design criteria manual as well. When do we require detentions? When do we require them to reanalyze their access management? If they've got two driveways close to each other on a texted roadway, at what point do we say, you've got to close one of them because you're unsafe? I think there's three criteria manuals. We really need to look at how we trigger them. And I, I would argue we need to have uniformity in how they are triggered. So it's predictable.
So what would you recommend?
I think we take staff back and look at those three components and at least put in, if y'all want to argue for a, a square footage component, I want to argue for a evaluation of either the building or their overall property based on the appraisal district and what their cost of construction is as the trigger.
And that's, that's what I said like five minutes ago, so.
Right, yeah, but...
I guess on the value, that's so subjective. I mean, when you have square footage, either five hundred or a set percentage, that's something I can take a tape measure and figure out. When you talk about values, are we talking about the appraisal district? Are we talking about a recent appraiser? And then how are we going to value the, the new improvements?
Well, they're, they're required to put in an evaluation when they submit the permit.
Yeah.
I understand, but...
You fill in a blank and then you leave it back on the staff to figure it out, to figure out whether that's reasonable or not.
But, but even off that, and I'm not going to say we all agree because I doubt we would, but I, I know what my house is valued at. I wouldn't sell it for.
Yeah.
So that's my issue anytime we start talking about value is what's on the appraisal rolls is not a market value.
And I, I could, I would argue that sometimes expansions are relatively inexpensive and sometimes not. Even though they're large, they're not a huge investment in the property. And therefore, the value, the evaluation of how much construction they're doing is a better idea of what, what they're willing to and capable of investing in the property.
I don't really care what they're willing to invest in the property.
Well, that we should. That's exactly what we're measuring. If you're talking about cost being a consideration, that's the investment.
I care about them being able to expand their facility without having to do a bunch of extra stuff.
Look, we can't just find a way to exempt people from the code. At that point, we just throw the UDC out if we're always looking for exemption.
Second?
Third?
Propose it, it'll get knocked down and we'll be...
I, I know it will. I'm just saying, that's my...
I understand. The rules are in place for a reason.
The rules are in place for a reason. And all we're asking is that we get some lenience on this. So there's other options, there's other cities in here that have something very similar to this. You know, it's not like we're asking for something crazy here. We're asking to look at this and see if there's something that we can do.
And all I'm asking is for, is when that, the council member reset, have staff go back and give us a couple of options and let's discuss it.
So how many?
There's options to us.
I, I hear three that are saying they want to stick with square footage. One more and we're only have, I mean, well, square foot. Percent of square foot, not value. So if we're already moving in a direction, I don't want to waste staff's time getting multiple options.
Then you're giving, we're already establishing, the reason why I want to have evaluation is because it can be uniform for everything. There is already, we're not changing the building code. It's a, it's a uniform code we adopt and hold. There's already an evaluation where they have to be in compliance with the IBC at fifty percent of evaluation. If we tie things back to the evaluation, it's uniform instead of giving people different hoops to jump through. There's a uniformity to the evaluation. That's my argument for it.
Does staff mind, I mean, we're coming back Saturday anyways.
We want to have the...
Couple weeks.
Fifteen staff, we're back recommending five.
I mean, it's not on the agenda to vote for anyway, so...
Well, we can't vote.
Yeah, so, so does staff mind maybe giving us a Thursday update?
Let's go with Ted.
I mean, I, I think there's consensus up here probably to stick with the square footage.
It's a discussion item, so we just have to provide us better information and we can discuss it.
I, I just hate for staff to do work when I think there's a consensus.
Does that staff member come in or John just come in on it?
Well, actually, I think we would be interested in hearing if there is a consensus one way or the other. And once you reset, I would suggest that we not be, we could give something to you in a couple of weeks if we're going to have to investigate and talk to other cities and provide you with examples, not this Thursday or not this Saturday. But the other here initially is we have a consensus one way or the other.
Can we do a raise a hand, square footage at ten percent?
We can't vote like that. We can't vote like that.
Well, there's not a vote, but there is a consideration and possible direction to staff. And if, if the direction could be to go out and get more, if four of you want us to go out and get other ways to determine this, we'll do that. If four of you want us to keep what we have now, that would be the direction to staff and we wouldn't go and get any additional information. So it's not a vote, it's...
But is that the most detailed we can give direction or can we say we are looking at?
I think that you can say, I want to see other methods or I want to see how you value it. I know that in the past, staff has struggled with, while we know what the tax assessor value is, when somebody comes in for a pre-development meeting, we can't tell them that they've triggered the UDC issues because we don't know what the value of their construction is. So they aren't able to plan for the construction of the building. They don't know that they have to bring it into the compliance with the UDC. And we can't tell them that because we don't know what their construction costs and they want to know when they get through pre-development.
I feel like I've heard four voices here say they're comfortable with square footage.
Yes, sir.
I would do percent, percent of square footage.
Why don't we take into consideration what John has just offered to us?
Well, he's asking for consensus.
He's asking for direction. Yeah, he's asking for it. So I guess, Councilman Carbone?
Staff, get back with us.
I'm, I'm fine basing it on square footage.
Councilmember Reed?
I'm fine with basing it on square footage.
I'm fine with square footage.
I'm fine with square footage.
I would just, I would just say the evaluation is still in there in the IBC. They still have to do it.
I understand. And the valuation is still a potential trigger. So we have an either or in the ordinance, so...
So it just makes it more confusing.
It's the same, same level of confusion. We're just raising the bar.
We're not raising it up anything. We're just making it more confusing.
We're making it more fair.
Okay. But there needs to be a limit on the square footage.
I've got five.
We're not solving anything. We're just moving a small arm.
Staff has the direction correct?
Yeah, we've got that direction on.
I think staff will be working on this for us. And let's move on to our next step. Moving in our agenda to an executive session on our regular meeting tonight for section five five one, point zero seven two for counsel, consultation with the city attorney regarding sale, lease, or purchase of real property associated with flood mitigation. And we will also continue the executive session of our special meeting with, with the personnel matters regarding appointments to boards and commissions. And we will recess at eight twenty-one. The council has returned from executive session in regards to the personnel matters of apartment to boards and commissions. Does the council have any message, probably, selection?
Yes, mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Chad Dillin to the Pearland Economic Development Commission. Corporation. Corporation.
Corporation, yeah. Okay. Have a second on that? We have a motion in a second? We have a motion second on that, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Ordno? Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Motion passed four to three.
Uh, mayor?
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor, I want to make a motion that we appoint Hank Cade to the Economic Commission.
We have a motion, a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I heard a second. We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor, I want to make a motion that we appoint Teresa Del Valle to serve on zoning board adjustments.
We have a motion. Is our second?
Aye, second.
We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Chairman. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Mayor, I would recommend that you close the regular meeting at this point and then, I'm sorry, special meeting.
Okay.
Close the special meeting and then we will have the regular meeting.
At this time, we will close the special meeting of the selection of boards and commission members at this, at nine fifty-six.
And then we're reopening the regular meeting.
Okay. We'll proceed now to the executive committee meeting from our agenda items. Do we have a report from our city attorney?
Staff would recommend... Staff would recommend council proceed as discussed in executive session with the acquisition of land regating, relating to flood mitigation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? Eric Dunn, Mr. Secretary, they're, have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Any further comment before the council or the staff? Eric Dunn, we are adjourned at 9:57.